Good evening and welcome to the 2025 Candidates Forum, sponsored by the Wallingford Community Women in collaboration with Wallingford Government Media. I'm Sally Tremaine, your program coordinator. This segment features seven of the 13 candidates running for town council. We ask that the audience please be respectful of everyone here, even if you disagree with what is being said. We have a lot to cover tonight, so please, no interruptions from the audience, and please hold off on your applause until the candidate's closing statement has been delivered. The first part of the program this evening will consist of questions asked of the candidates by members of the Wallingford Community Women, Debbie Hicks and Debbie Phillips. They will each ask a question, starting from the left here. The candidate will be allowed two minutes to respond. The next question will be asked of the second candidate, and so on. Each candidate, if they so wish, will have one minute after the question and answer period to provide commentary on any question asked of another candidate. At the conclusion of the question and answer period, three minutes will be allowed for each candidate to summarize. Before beginning the questions, I'd like to introduce the seven candidates running for town council who are with us for this session. Starting to my far right is Brian Rivard, Tom Laffin, Melanie Rosaci, Craig Fishbein, Vincent Testa, Autumn Allinson, and Daryl Stancunna. So we'll start with the questions. Debbie, will you please ask a question of Brian?
What is your most important concern regarding budgeting funds for the success of our education system at this time, and how do you propose to implement that?
Thank you, Debbie. First, let me say thank you to the Wallingford Community Women. I've been to this in the past, and it's always a good event. Thanks to all of you who came today, and thanks to those who are tuning in. It's really important for everyone to get engaged in their local government, especially with some of the things going on nationally. I think locally, we can really make a difference. It's one of the reasons I'm in the race. Relative to your question, those who know me, I'm a strong and long advocate for education being a driver of success in local towns. There's economic value. It's a multiplying force when we think about growth in the community, both for businesses and residents. And I think, to be honest, one of the issues that I think I'm really focused on is how we can prioritize those economic drivers, one being education. When I ran for the Board of Ed years ago, and in 10 years, in the Systemwide Parent Teacher Advisory Council, I was always an advocate for the school system. It doesn't mean it's an open checkbook, and it doesn't mean that we're going to spend all of the money at once. But what it does mean is we need to be thinking stepwise into the future of how we make those smart investments so that we can compete locally. Connecticut is not a low-cost state. We all know that. But what we do pride ourselves on is education. And one way to get ahead as a local community is to be highly competitive with those towns around us. And unfortunately, over the last 10 to 15 years, we've been slipping a little bit. It's not any one person's fault, but I think we tend to focus on near-term economic objectives, and we haven't laid out the steps to keep supporting it in the long term. I'm really happy to hear a lot of the candidates are hopping on board with this subject. I've been advocating for it since I started. It's one of the reasons I threw my hat back in the race at this time. I think we can do better for our students and our school systems, and I think I have a unique perspective on doing it. I've got twin daughters who went through the schools up until last year, and now I've got a five-year-old. We can talk about the reason for the gap later. That's another story. But nonetheless, I'm committed to helping get these schools moving in the right direction. Thank you.
How do you plan to support the police department as they try to address the rise in car theft and juvenile crime?
I have always been a big supporter of the police department. I've had family, and current family, that are police officers and have been police officers. The best way we can support them is by meeting their needs, budgetary, and with equipment. It's come up, fingerprinting with cars that are stolen. We do that already. The juvenile crime, it's been discussed in the past, like, well, maybe we should defund the police and pay for more local youth programs. And in Wallingford, when you look at car thefts as an example, it's not Wallingford kids that are stealing cars are really getting in trouble. A couple of years ago, we had a group of kids that needed to be redirected, and it required a very specific approach to that group of kids. And our Youth and Social Services Department and our police department worked on that together and seem to have done a good job. I think the key, just as I supported their union contracts, is to keep Wallingford competitive so that we can attract strong police officers and to just keep giving them the equipment and the tools they need. Wallingford right now is the second safest town in the state. We were number one last year. We're ranked top in the nation. We're on the right track, and I think all we need to do is keep trusting the great team of officers that we have. Thanks.
Do you think the nonprofits in our town do enough to support the Wallingford community in lieu of paying taxes?
Thank you so much for the question. I think that there is a lot that our nonprofits do to help support the town. There's always more consideration that we can give and more coordination with different areas. I know that Cho has come up numerous times in the previous panel and in lots of other meetings, and it needs to be an effort where you sit down with them and have a conversation and have come up with some sort of collaborative agreement with them. I think going at our community nonprofits in an adversarial way is not the way that we'll be able to come up with agreements. As someone who has previously ran a community children's mental health nonprofit myself, there's lots of ways that nonprofits work into the community. It is their number one... If you are serving a community, you want to serve all the people in the community, and there's lots of ways in which they do that. So when we consistently talk about Cho or consistently single out different nonprofits, I don't think that's the way to work together in a community. So I think there's always more talks that we can have, but the way that we go about doing that is the most important part.
Debbie, a question for Craig.
Wallingford residents have voiced interest in more transparent and responsive local governance. What measures would you propose to improve communication between the town council and the public?
Thank you, Debbie, for that question. I never start this out with "thank you" to the Wallingford Community Women, but I'm going to start it out with "thank you" to the Wallingford Community Women because you've made this... Certainly, we've been on our toes tonight. It's not as rigid. Anytime a resident comes to me about another way to inform the public, I'm always open to that. But let's think back 30 years ago. How much access did our residents have to town councilors? They didn't have internet, well, maybe 30 years ago, but certainly years ago. They didn't have the email that we have today, the cell phones. We are 24/7 basically available to the public. Council meetings, this room used to be packed. Now, there's hardly anybody that attends our council meetings because we do have access. You can sit at home and watch us on YouTube live. You don't have to come to the meeting and all of that stuff. You can email us. We call you back. So I don't know that we aren't accessible, but I'm certainly open to whatever other avenue the residents think that we need to venture down that road. So thank you for the question.
A question for Vinnie.
Where do you see Wallingford in five years? And what will you do during your tenure on the town council to help Wallingford obtain that vision?
In five years, I'm going to learn how to use the microphone, and then I can share my wisdom. Where do I see Wallingford? Well, Wallingford, I mean, those of us, especially who've grown up here, lived through our whole lives, it's hard to describe, but we know the character of Wallingford. Wallingford is not a small community. It's a lot of people here. It's big in land, 46-something thousand people, but it still has a small-town feel to it. It has that character that we've just valued. And when I think, where are we going to be in five years? I want to make sure we're doing the things we need to do to maintain what makes Wallingford great. We have a lot of challenges before us. We certainly have to address issues with our schools. So in five years, I would hope that that would be resolved and pretty much on the way to getting settled. Long construction projects need to be done. I would like to see in five years affordable housing for our senior population so that they can stay in the community and that the housing that they're currently in can become available for the younger people in Wallingford so that they don't leave. I don't want to see people leaving Wallingford. I want to see them staying here and being able to live out their lives and also begin new lives so Wallingford maintains its vitality. That's where I see us in five years. I see us with a rebuilt grand list so that the tax burden is coming back off of the homeowners and back to a better mix of businesses that can take on some of the tax burden as well. And I'll be working towards that directly. Thank you.
Thank you. A question for Autumn, please, Debbie.
What feedback have you received about the recent reevaluation and consequent rise in taxes? How will you move forward based on that feedback?
Thank you for the question. I personally have received much feedback about it, especially on social media, from one person who never answers my questions. Everybody loves the rise in taxes, don't they? No, I didn't love the rise in taxes. I didn't love putting that on to the people of Wallingford. The feedback has been negative. I've also heard, though, that while this is a negative feeling, and we don't really... There's a lot of uneasiness around what is going to happen next because we haven't even tapped into the infrastructure changes and the strategic plan going forward for the year. We are literally funding our employment insurance and continuing to maintain equipment and try to maintain our schools as best as we can. I think that nobody... I didn't want the tax increase. I don't want to unfairly take people's money away from them. Wallingford is a state that still attracts businesses, or is a city in the state of Connecticut that still attracts businesses despite a lot of tax burden in Connecticut being placed on businesses. I don't want to so heavily burden the businesses with taxes that they don't anymore find Wallingford attractive. However, I do also think that we need some sort of a shift in the attraction level, the encouragement to expand, and working through our Economic Development Department. I think that we could make some really, really positive changes with attracting new businesses, new business taxpayers, more contracts similar to the proton science center that's going in. And I think that with our electric rates over the... We can have a largely more positive conversation going forward. Thank you.
Debbie, a question for Daryl.
In your opinion, what is the best part of living in Wallingford? And what unique skills do you possess that can help make it even better?
Well, good evening, and thank you to the Women's Club for having us tonight. This is really exciting to be here, and these are serious topics that are going on and what's going on in the city of Wallingford. And my best interest and my best is dealing with people, psychology and sociology. I was the president of my HOA Old Village Circle for four years and then additionally 11 years on the board. So I kept the fees low, and if it's not broken, don't fix it. The simple solution that I am. It's a real common sense thing. We have to save money, and I'm very good at saving money for things. I retired at 45. I haven't worked in 11 years. So I'm very good at financially figuring out what we need to do to eliminate what we have to for money that needs to be spent on our education. So I have a whole floor plan of that, but I was in the National Guard, so I'm a veteran too, so I was very good at leading when I was in there. And I did a lot with my community, again, with Big Brothers, Big Sisters in Wallingford when it was on Simpson School. I don't know if everybody even knows where that is. I've been a resident for 56 years, but I did Big Brothers, Big Sisters there and helped volunteer. And I helped volunteer at the YMCA back in 1990. So I did volunteer work there too in the program. So I've done a lot of volunteer work in this community in Wallingford, and I could do a lot with getting on the council to save money and make everybody happy. Thank you.
Starting over with Brian, Debbie.
Do you think the emergency shelters should be open year-round?
I think the biggest issue that everyone's talking about tonight is the tax burden, and the reality is families, seniors, are finding it more and more difficult to make ends meet. And that's because costs are going up. It's not just taxes. There are a lot of things. I was in one of the Affordable Housing Working Group meetings, and some of the stories that I heard were emotional. We owe it to the residents of this town to find a way forward. In the meantime, we need some safety nets to help them out. And if we can put aside a little bit of cash to keep this open, and if someone is in a transient period in their life and they have no place to go, that is the minimum we can do as a civilized society. There are other things, but I mean, food, housing, thank goodness, we have the Connecticut Food Share locally. But in those discussions, when I was on planning and zoning board, we heard about the massive expansion of food need and food insecurity risk in this town and statewide. That expansion is being driven by that. It's great they're doing it here, but it's sad that it has to occur. We have close to 40% free and reduced lunch requirements in our town today. That's grown 10% to 15% since I moved into town, and that means if you look on one side of you or the other, that family is struggling in Wallingford. That's the reason we need to think about good schools and the economic drivers and make small investments and maintain things as we go, and we need to develop a long-term plan to do it. My work in my company, I've made a career out of this at Pratt &amp; Whitney, developing long-term goals, achieving them from both profit and loss. I'm not a tax-and-spend Democrat. I'm someone with solutions who's going to do the things we need to do to make this town move forward. That's why I want your vote. That's why I would keep the shelter open year-round.
A question for Tom.
What would you, as a member of the town council, do to ensure sufficient funds in the budget to ensure accessibility and maintenance of our town parks?
Sure. Thank you for the question. The first thing we need to do is... So we have a Parks and Rec Commission that works with our Parks and Rec Department, and they're constantly working to modify and adjust and improve all of our parks for all the different types of users, whether it's just like fun level or accessibility. A couple of years ago, we talked about there was no way to get to this part of the park. There was a ramp to get into the swing set area, but there was no sidewalk. Well, we should look at maybe having a sidewalk to the ramp. However, there was no accessible play structures in that area anyway. I think we need to be mindful about what we're putting in each park and how it works. There are grants available. We need to just keep working and listening to the community and finding out what people and what our community needs. It's not a one-size-fits-all by any means, and I think what we need to do is just listen to what we have in Wallingford, identify what we have in Wallingford, listen to what people need, and then find the way, the best way to get to it.
Debbie, a question for Melanie.
Wallingford's housing stock has not kept pace with the needs of young families, seniors, and lower-income residents. What specific actions would you support, such as zoning changes, budget allocations, or partnerships to increase affordable housing options while maintaining neighborhood integrity?
Thank you so much for the question. So I think right now, Wallingford is really concentrating on this and in a bipartisan way. Wallingford Works is something that is a bipartisan group that really has been concentrating on this, and I think that that's fantastic. I think one of the things that we need to start with is educating people on what affordable housing means and what it means in our community. For Wallingford, it's based on our median income, which is $98,000. And so then 30% of that is really what the affordable rents would be. So in Wallingford, that would be anywhere between $1,200 and $2,400 based on people's income and based on the $98,000 median income. When you start there, I think people have a misconception about what affordable housing is, and we get a lot of that "not in my backyard" philosophy, and that's not what affordable housing is. Affordable housing allows a new single mom, maybe someone that was the victim of domestic violence that's now out on her own and wants to stay in Wallingford to keep her children or family in the same school. Or maybe you have someone who just lost a spouse and only has one income. That is what affordable housing is in Wallingford. I absolutely support if zoning changes will help that, but I honestly believe that this issue starts with public education and having people understand what affordable housing means, and it's that middle housing. And whatever semantics we have to use to make that happen, to make people understand and be more open to what affordable housing means, so seniors, families, single moms, single dads can stay in this wonderful town, that's what we need to do.
Debbie, a question for Craig.
What do you see as the biggest challenge facing our town today, and what would you propose to do to remedy that?
Well, I think it's twofold. I'm very concerned about the one high school, two high school situation. I've been very active, because that's a large expenditure. You're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. And I think it was May of 2023, the Board of Education came to us and said, "This is what we're planning." Although they'll claim differently today, everything we were presented with said Lyman Hall. And we asked a lot of questions about traffic studies and things like that, and they hadn't done a traffic study. We asked how somebody, a family, going to get from one side of town to the other side of town. Then things started to crop up in the wetlands and the ability to increase the property. As we sit here today, and actually, this talk about the high school situation actually started in this town in 2018, so a very long time ago. And as we sit here today, the Board of Education still doesn't have a proposed site, yet they're spending money on what they would do at one site. So at some point, you've got to get... It's either cut bait or fish. I think that's a very important thing here, and it dovetails into tax increases and things like that because $200 million plus, I think it's 270, 250, is the average of redoing the schools or having one high school is a lot of money. Whether you bond it or you get a grant from the state, it's still a lot of money, and that's one of the very largest things facing our town. Thank you.
Debbie, a question for Vinnie.
With reference to the town's budget, what are the top five areas that you would like to see prioritized and why? How would you propose to implement those priorities?
I got the good one. Well, when we think about our budget, we need to think about what government should be providing, what are the responsibilities the government has for the community. And you start with those responsibilities, services that the community requires. So when I'm prioritizing the budget, that's how I'm looking at it. And not that this is the number one, but it's right up there. You start with public safety. So when we're looking at the budget, you're prioritizing our public safety services, police, fire, emergency services, and so on. We have to make sure that the community is safe and well-cared-for, that all of our service providers, police, fire, EMS, have the tools and the equipment they need to do their jobs safely and properly. And that's an ongoing project to keep that up. Secondly, of course, we have education. That's always going to be a top priority and the number-one expenditure for our budget. So that's the second priority. The third, I would say, is going to be the upkeep of your infrastructure. We have so many roads, sidewalks, buildings. We have to maintain them. That contributes to safety as well. So you have to make sure your Public Works Department and so forth is properly funded so that they can do their job. We have a Park and Rec Department that's second to none. We have to provide recreational opportunities for our residents and community. That's one way they can receive back some of the tax dollars that they've been contributing. And lastly, the priority right now for me would be finding creative ways to fund all this. It's easy to say taxes, but we can't continue that way. I've mentioned before, and I'll mention again in a little while, ideas I have for that. So my time is up.
Thank you. Debbie, a question for Autumn.
How will you encourage citizens to become more involved in the local government, nonprofits, and other organizations that support our community?
So I thought I wanted that question, but I think I wanted this one more. So I'm actually extremely involved in our community besides being on the town council. So I sat for a very brief moment, but still sit on a committee for the Boys and Girls Club of Greater New Haven in the finance area. I am the secretary-webmaster of the Wallingford Rotary. I'm the secretary of the RTC. And if anybody knows how to not say no to anything, it's me. How I got involved with all of that was actually Tom Laffin. He started me off in Rotary, and it basically snowballed ever since. What I mean to say by this is ask around what other people are getting involved in. You find people who you admire and you want to be part of what they're part of more often. Find things that you're interested in. I wanted so badly to be part of Wallingford Community Women, but unfortunately, you meet on a day that I could never attend. So it was the same issue with Boys and Girls Clubs. So unfortunately, I couldn't say yes to that, but I am really, really thankful for you guys doing this for us all every two years. Find the people that you want to be involved with. Everybody has somebody that they're interested in. Everybody has some passion. When you find your passion, chase it. If you want to learn how to quilt, Parks and Rec has a great sewing group, or Yankee Cloth. If you want to learn about government, start participating. The easiest way is to just get involved, and if you really need something to not say no to, please reach out. My information is on the town website. Thank you.
Debbie, a question for Daryl, please.
With the ever-increasing occurrence of car thefts, do you think the police department should set aside money in the budget to fund fingerprinting of the vehicles since they are typically recovered?
First of all, they're not doing their jobs like that. It depends on who the citizen is. Let's say it's somebody that's a repeat offender or somebody that lives in an HOA. They're going to take what type of investigation, pick and choose what to fingerprint. So to answer that question for anybody, they aren't doing fingerprinting for every investigation. So I'm very glad that that question was brought out here because it's not happening. We have police officers hiding behind buildings parked. We have a police fort with like $80 million worth of revenue going into. If they want to get cameras, which the mayor had talked about for the city of Wallingford, then why do we need so much police? We're going to need to get rid of half of the police department, and we could take that department, put them back in the armory. The armory is fine, always been. The armory is fine, always been, and put, make that into affordable housing. That building, that fort can be really used for homeless shelter, can be used for a lot. But no, our police are not doing their job. And it depends on who you are. If they don't like you, they're not doing it. I know many people that have told me many cases, and that's why I want to start the civil review board, get on as a police commissioner, do investigations, get involved, make sure everybody is getting their car fingerprinted if it gets broken into, or any other situation that they could come forward to me, and I will have an office in that building for free. I don't need to get paid, and make sure that they're doing their job. Thank you so much.
At this point, we are going to ask each candidate if they would like to comment on a question that was asked of another candidate. And we'll start at the end here with Brian.
Okay, thank you. I think I want to maybe respond in combination to, you know, Mr. Fishmine and Mr. Testa, one being, you know, top priority and the other being those priorities across the board. I think one thing that I would bring to the table is a real view of long-term planning and how we do that. If we were to ask anyone up here or in the government, you know, what are we doing in the next three years? And what are we doing in the next five years? And how does that fit within our financials and what we can afford? I'm not sure that is out there in existence in a group of shared objectives that we all support and guide. And I think the town council has a real opportunity to play a lead in this in concert with the Board of Ed, the administration, in defining what those objectives are, putting it out there, and then showing the public how we're going to get there financially over, over the long term. In business, we call it pro forma financial statements. We focus on top line, which is revenue. We took it, focus on bottom line, which is costs and constraining those and expanding at the same time. I think we really need to bring all the creative ideas together and put them down as one team. We might be able to leverage the plan of operations. I'll, I'll hold my, you can see I'm passionate. Thank you.
Tom, would you like to answer another question?
Yeah, the police are doing their job. We talked about this. They are doing, we're the second safest town in the state. What, what more do you want? The, the armory, if you had ever been in it, if you had talked to the police department, the police chief, the leadership, you would know that that, that building was completely unsuited to be a police department any longer. Anywhere from the holding cells to the women's locker rooms to even how we put the cars in and take prisoners out. No, that, no, that's, sorry. Police are doing great, and I think that needs to be reiterated. I don't agree with having speed cameras as a money revenue generating source. But another option, and this ties back to the car theft thing, is we put license plate reading cameras on the entry points to town that are only used to identify stolen cars and whatnot. The second that a stolen car enters from another town, a lot, out of time. I had three more things to say.
One, one minute isn't very long. Melanie, would you like to make a one-minute comment?
I'm going to work really, really hard.
Just one minute, Melanie, it's one minute.
So I want to talk about education because we need to start treating it as a core investment and not discretionary. We need to stop balancing the budgets of every other department and then letting education hold the rest and hold the bag. There's been eight million dollars in cuts since 2020, eight million dollars. And when people think it's invisible, it's not. We have less music in Spanish in K through five. We lost instructional coaches for teachers, career counselors in the high school, nurse supervisors, gifted and talented programs are now sharing staff. Teachers are going between schools. They're teaching multiple things in multiple schools. We're slightly below the state average in teacher turnover. Ten percent of buildings are being, building cut budgets are happening. They're not invisible. We need to stop making education discretionary.
Craig, do you have a minute comment?
I think if I talk real slow, I can get to a minute. You know, there's some votes up here that are eight to one, me being the one. You know, I'm the only member of the town council that voted against the tax increase, mostly because I didn't see we were getting a benefit. You know, if we're going to get beautiful parks like I see in other towns, if we're going to get, you know, something like, something tangible, you know, I can, I can foresee that. But I just didn't see it. There was another eight to one that I was going to mention, oh, the, the regionalization, the downtown, glomming onto the project from the state, which I know I'm going to run out, my minute's going to run out, but that was also an eight to one, and I just don't agree with giving up our power to the state. So, thank you.
Vinnie, would you like to make a comment?
Oh, Tom was so passionate. He had a lot going on. I was going to give him my minute so he could finish, but I'm not going to. I'm not going to. No, I would, I would tend to agree with him, though, that the, the way the police department has been going is admirable. We definitely needed the, the new facility. I mean, the price of these things, it's, yeah, it's going, it's sticker shock no matter what you do nowadays, no matter what you build. But we definitely needed a new police facility. That goes without saying. But that question about, you know, would you support, you know, money so that they could fingerprint cars? And I didn't realize they might, they weren't doing that. Maybe they're doing some of it. That's common sense to me. If they need a little bit more money to be able to complete more thorough investigations and, and, and get this problem taken care of, then I'm so wholeheartedly in favor of that.
And finally, Daryl, would you like to make a one-minute comment? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, I apologize, Autumn. You can go first.
All right. I know, I should try to give you my time. So thank you very much. I actually wanted to comment a little bit about priorities in the town. I actually agree with Melanie that education needs to be the primary priority. Education is the way that we will backfill ourselves for the future. If we do not have a well-educated student body and we do not have well-prepared teenagers exiting into the workforce, into college, into trade school, we, as a society, will not succeed. I also wanted to comment on affordable housing. I think Melanie did a fantastic job on that, too. It's really annoying that she's stealing my thunder all night. So affordable housing is something that could have changed my life as a child. I think that a lot of people are, a lot of people would judge it without understanding what it really is. So thank you.
And finally, Daryl, your minute comment?
Yes, I'd like to answer on doubleheader on Mr. Testa and Mr. Laffin and just say that we need to change up here because if these people get revoted in, they went for eighty million dollars for a police station, they're saying the police are doing their job, yet we're being asked about cars being broken into and why aren't they all being investigated? So if that wasn't a question tonight, then that answers for, that we need to get rid of the old, get the new, concentrate on our schools, our education, fund the schools, fund the programs that they need, and not have so many police officers driving around, parked in back of buildings. I can't tell you how many times I've seen that. And they're not investigating every case. We don't have a civilian review board at all. And just like Mr. Laffin said, he's depending on one man, the chief, to answer the whole police department that the city is paying eighty million dollars for. One man. Why not get a civilian review board and I'll be the police commissioner? Thank you.
Thank you all. That concludes the question and answer portion of tonight's program. Each candidate will now have three minutes to make a closing statement, and we're going to change it up and do it in reverse order. So, Daryl, you're up first with your three minutes.
I want to say thank you so much for all those people out there that did and signed the signatures for me to be on the ballot because neither party would put me on. And we need to get new people up here to make changes. Like one, if, if these same old people that voted down education, this whole room was packed with people crying to the town council last year. Please don't cut the education. After the microphone ended, they cut it right away. So if you want the same people in here talking a good talk, manipulating with good talk and big words, then we're going to get more cut in education. That's going to go forward. Number two, joke school. We need new people up here to get them taxed for they could do their part up here. Number three, we need to start having some reggae music festivals, big names, Uptown, not this Twilight Band. We have a lot of people with businesses that are suffering, suffering here. We have houses that are worth more than businesses. That's really bad. There is no big business going on in Wallingford. We need to bring revenue in, get some big bands in here like Queen Afrika and some reggae King Yellow Man, and get different culture, get other people to come here. It's not just Wallingford. We want to get the whole state of Connecticut to get involved here. And number four, we got to do something about the police department. They're not doing their jobs. Let me ride shotgun on all three shifts. I want to be the police commissioner, do evaluations. What is everyone afraid of? You spent ninety million dollars on a police fort, for what? And this homeless shelter, make it into that. We got people telling the public that they're recovering addicts with no sympathy on the council for the homeless. They don't want it open all year round. What does that tell you? Make a change, people. We got to do something about cutting taxes because no one's mentioned that we went to twenty percent on this last administration with the council. Nobody went against it. We need to do something, make the change now before we hit thirty percent. The community pool is going to be a financial disaster. Trust me. Mark my words. That's not all comfortable. That's for downtown people that enjoy drinking. These younger kids aren't into alcohol and all that stuff. We're not thinking about the youth. Where do we ever think about, let's put trampoline, let's put some skateboard park like we originally supposed to do for these kids? Instead, you got the mayor wants these people incarcerated, work with the legislation, which is Fishbine probably because he's over here, he's on that, too. So it's not about enforcing incarceration and busting our kids in this city. It's wrong. We need to do some kind of reform for them, some kind of community involvement. They are our problem. It's a village that's supposed to be together and help each other out, not lock up people. Thank you.
Autumn, your three-minute closing statement?
First, I wanted to take this time to thank the Wallingford Community Women. Again, I know I sort of did before, but thank you again for putting this on and for dedicating your time to creating these questions and listening to all of us multiple times talk about these things. I wanted to also thank everyone who is in the audience. I know that people can stream it from home, but it really does make a difference when you're sitting up here to see faces in the chairs. So I appreciate everybody coming. I appreciate the people online, too, but, you know, it's, it's nice when somebody's in the room. Sorry. So my most, my most recent term on the council started off with a little bit of turbulence, as probably anybody who is observing knows. Through that turbulence, though, it seemed to grow into, you know, some level of mutual respect for everybody. I have enjoyed my time on the council so far. Partnering with people with different views and taking in all of those different commentaries is invaluable for people to grow. I think that we all come with different experiences and different skills, and that is what you get when you get nine people up here to represent the community. We need, we need to continue the community practice of being stronger together. Wallingford is a strong community. We have great community engagement opportunities through our government, through our nonprofits, through our businesses, and many different hosted events throughout the summer, the winter, and other times of year. We have a lot of opportunities in town for people to get to know each other. I would encourage people to participate in them. I would also encourage people to participate in government. If you want to know or you have a question about government, please ask us. We can't always get to you immediately because we do get a lot of emails, but we do try to get to you eventually. I was recently locked out of my email, so it took me like ten days to get back to people, but I did. As for myself, my goal for this next term is to continue working in the same capacity that I have with the council, if elected, with whoever ends up on the council. I don't think that division is going to create, is going to generate any kind of community spirit. I think that what we really need to do is stop talking about people and personalities and continue talking about the, the issues. Thank you.
Vinnie, would you like to make your closing statement?
Yes, please, thank you. I too want to say thank you to the Wallingford Community Women. I've been to, through about twenty of these over many years, and I can't overstate how important what you're doing is for the community. This is an opportunity for everybody to get a chance to learn a little bit more about all the candidates that are asking the people of the town to vote for them. And it's really the only one. So I really appreciate all the time and effort that you put into putting on this event and how valuable, and, and thank you because it is so valuable to the democratic process in town. And thank you to everybody who's here and all the folks watching at home. I appreciate that you're taking the time to try to learn a little bit more about, again, all the people that are, that are asking for your vote. And this is one way that you can hopefully learn a little bit about each of us. I first ran for office in 1989. I ran, I was elected to the Board of Ed, and I, after serving a couple of years on the Wetlands Commission, and I went on to serve about eight years, not about, I went on to serve eight years on the Board of Education. And then I was fortunate enough to be elected to the town council in 2004, and I'm completing right now my tenth term. I'm very proud of the fact that, according to my records, I'm now the longest-serving elected official in town. Okay? Some, some would say that's good, some would say that's not. But anyway, but that's only possible because all of you, my neighbors, have deemed me worthy of your support and your vote. It's the only reason I've been able to do this, and that means the world to me, that after all these years, you still feel that I'm doing a good enough job, that I deserve another try. And I appreciate all that. I still get excited by every election, and every term brings new challenges, which brings us to where we are now. This is the most challenging time I've ever experienced in my years of service. We all know why. We just, our recent budget had an unprecedented tax increase. Everybody's, you know, having a hard time with that. We know the revaluation had a lot to do with that. But the fact remains, we need to rebuild our grand list if we're going to do anything that we're talking about, anything we want to do. Twenty, thirty years ago, we built the industrial parks, and the result of that was a grand list that contributed a tremendous amount to our, to our bottom line. We lost Bristol Myers and C.R.A. left. That was a great hole in our revenue stream. So my focus, among other things, is going to be to work hard to try to generate a business development plan that is productive and brings businesses to Wallingford. It's the only way we're going to be able to continue to function and fund everything we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, your summary?
You know, we have a great town. I have a well at the house, and for some reason, I think the water makes me write poetry. So, "In Wallingford, where maples flame, a quiet town with a storied name, beneath the skies of softest blue, old mills and vineyards greet the view. The Quinnipiac flows far and wide as Main Street hums with hometown pride. Historic homes painted bright white, Route Five glows in the evening light. Seasons turn with whispered grace, each one leaves its tender trace. Choate's bank account is a target for some, but their architecture is second to none. With Titans strong and Trojans bold, stories of success are freely told. On courts, rinks, and fields, they rise with might, in maroon and gold, blue and white. In every stone, in every tree, lives, lives Wallingford's deep legacy, a town of heart, of roots run deep." tree, lives, lives Wallingford's deep legacy, a town of heart, of roots run deep, where dreams and history gently sleep. So, in the fall, when ballots line the way and signs bloom up in bright display, don't be concerned about a local fight. It's just Wallingford's heart beating bright. But alas, that is all about our town, to the point I must turn this rhyming around and tell you why to support me this year, as my three minutes of time are ending. They're near. Against tax hikes, my stance is clear, protecting residents year after year. Eight terms I've served and I still stand with calloused heart yet steady hand. I back our first responders strong. I believe in right and fight what's wrong. A watchdog of your hard-earned pay, I vote to spend the wiser way. For steady hands and thoughtful choice, for every Wallingford citizen's voice, vote Craig Fishbine, strong and true, a future built with me and you. Thank you and God bless America."
Thank you, Craig. That was wonderful. Melanie, can you top that?
I also have well water and I have no poem. So, I have uh been born and raised here. I've uh lived here over forty years. Uh, my husband and I chose to build our home here and raise our three children here. I'm a nineteen ninety-four graduate of Mark Tishian High School. I love Wallingford. Um, if you don't know my work on the Board of Education, I just am uh serving my first term. I am not a politician. I decided to run for the Board of Education because I felt that um as a parent, I was not being heard about the high school issue. And that is what um really pushed me into advocacy um at a level. And you know, if you can't beat them, join them. Um, and then maybe you can beat them from the inside. We'll see. Um, but the, the high school issue and Wallingford and keeping small high schools are are really important to me. Um, civic engagement is really important to me. Um, being involved in the community is really important to me. I'm on the Board of Coalition for a Better Wallingford. I'm on the Board of um Greater New Haven Boys and Girls Club. Um, the Board of Ed is very time-consuming, um, and one of the only boards um where there is, there is no pay. I also highly um really push public input and transparency. I think it's extremely important. I worked really hard to make sure that there were public input on the one high school. Um, it took a long time, but we did, we did have that. Um, I have a passion for our community. My husband and I are also business owners in the town. Um, we own Triton Athletics um and we work lots with the high school kids and kids in college and even younger kids. Um, and so we're very, very involved in our community. Um, and I think that's extremely important. Um, we need to decide what are our values and our common goal and mission in this town. Um, I think if you get a group of nine individuals up here that can agree on a common vision for this town and what our priorities are, you will see us move things in a much quicker pace. Um, it doesn't matter what party you are. It matters if you care about Wallingford and how you want to move us forward. Um, I can work across party lines. Um, I work very well with um the other party, uh, the Republican Party on the Board of Education. Um, and I will continue to do that and I will continue to push for public transparency and public input um if I am elected to the town council. Thank you.
Tom, your closing statement?
Thank you. Uh, thank you to the Wallingford Community Women. Thank you to government TV, not, uh, not just for tonight, both organizations, uh, but for everything you do throughout the year. Um, I know for a lot of people, it may seem like it, it's just about tonight. But both organizations um are constantly out in the community and, and carrying a heavy load. Um, and I also want to thank uh my fellow candidates um that were here and in the previous session for running. Um, even when I disagree with you, I respect uh the action over just the, the rhetoric. Um, I've been, I've served seven terms on the town council, four on the Board of Education before that. I've lived in Wallingford my entire life. Um, I've had kids graduate high school. I've got one that's a senior now and there's still more to do. Um, the one versus two high school, the town is so divided in such a hateful way sometimes. And I, and I don't understand, uh, I guess people are just passionate about it for whatever reason. Um, but I think the answer has to be to, to figure out, I've, I've not hidden this, but to figure out, to push a referendum forward so that the community can vote once and for all. Otherwise, no matter what happens, whether we do one or two, the other side will always turn back and say, oh, but if we had done it this way, it would have been fine. We just need a vote to put the whole thing to rest. We need to look at um who's governing and who's just doing politics. I, in this day and age, it's very difficult to identify and then, and stay with the, the authentic people. And it's not just what they're doing, it's how and why. And I think it's really important when you look over who you're voting for, that you look at, look at those reasons and, and make those considerations. Um, I know myself and a lot of us are just doing our best to do what we can for the town, a, a town that we all love. And we may not agree with how we get to the end, um, but I think most of us really just love the town and want it to be a better place. And it's sad to see uh not just the country, but the town so divided. And I think we can all take a step back to just be a little more kind to each other, um, and really make Wallingford worth all this work uh on November fourth. And I hope that you'll support me and the other good candidates. Thank you.
And last but not least, Brian, your three-minute, or excuse me, yes, your three-minute statement?
Thank you. First and last, convenient. I'd like some place to eat if anyone's interested. Hey, um, thank you to everyone. Um, thanks to everybody up here. I know, you know, all of you. And to kind of echo those statements here, I mean, I think everybody has positive intent. Anyone who gets up here, you don't do it because it's fun. You don't do it because you're making a lot of money. You're doing it because you care deeply and you have a passion. Uh, that's why I'm here. Um, one of the best decisions, you know, Anne Marie and, you know, I made was coming to this town. Um, you probably heard it in my passion, some of my prior statements. It's not because I'm an angry person. It's just because I think we are at a little bit of a, of a crossroads. Um, I think it kind of shocked everyone, the, the big step up in taxes. It shocked, it shocked me. I know a lot of people are struggling with that. Um, I think we need the best people up here who can see the way forward. You know, I think we, we described up here all of the different departments and all of the different needs and there, there are many. Okay? And I think right now, you know, one way I can help and add value in my business, you know, responsibilities, I'm always looking at needs assessments. How do we stack them up? How do we then select the ones that are the most important to us and the most, you know, the biggest drivers of economic value to the town, whether it be the schools, whether it be maintaining our, our parks and all the things that make Wallingford great? If we don't maintain those assets properly and timely, they will become liabilities of the future. And I think that's what we've, we've all, we're all realizing now. There was a reevaluation impact, but we also have lost, you know, quite a bit of business over time. You know, I'm in a global company. I know the elements that it, that it takes to attract businesses and I, and that's, that's a skill set and knowledge base that I want to freely and openly give to this town. Um, and I'm willing to, you know, commit lots of time. You know, those who know me through Little League, United Way, you know, um, Girl Scouts, all of the different ways I give, I don't do it lightly. If you put me in the seat, I will get the job done for you and I will fight every day for everyone in this town. Thank you.
Thank you all. This concludes part two of the two thousand twenty-five Town Council Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching here in our audience and at home and remind you to vote on or before November fourth. Good night.